Right, we are on the air, everyone. And we are our work session. And we will open with the discussion of climate and equity programs with Katie Guevaras, our Climate and Natural Resources Manager, and Gabriela Sanz Bello Gutierrez, our Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hi. Good evening, my name is Sarvesh. Mayor, Council President, Council, council members. My name is Gabriela Sanz Bello Gutierrez. Thank you again for the introduction. And we're excited to be here with you this afternoon to share our part two of our Equity and Climate Program updates. You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Katie Guevaras. I'm really excited. I feel like this is something Gabriela and I have been working on for a while now. And so I'm excited to show you some of the, just a few of the really great things we've been able to do together in our programs.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. It might not be turned on on the side.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I think before we do get started into this, I do want to thank our council members and city leadership for the continued commitment to equity and climate. I want to recognize that may not be the case for other municipalities and agencies and make space for communities who are also hurting because of it. I want to specifically call to some of the statements you all made to our Milwaukee residents during the fourth regular session, February 4th regular session, and including them in this month's Milwaukee Pilot Edition. I like to read a few sentences from there because I don't think our community hears it enough. That's okay with you all? From immigration and healthcare to climate action and LGBTQ rights, we are seeing sweeping changes that will hurt our community. We know that these decisions are unsettling, particularly for those who have already felt vulnerable in recent years. We want our community to hear this from us loud and clear. Milwaukee will not be swayed by chaos or fear. We see you, we support you, and we will continue to stand up for justice, inclusion, and dignity for all. Thank you. Thank you, council, for being great supporters of our Milwaukee residents and the work that Katie and I are leading for the city. And I'm grateful to be in the position to continue to do this work. So with that, I'll transition it over to you.
Yeah. Well said. The kind of overview of our presentation today is some updates of our ongoing climate and equity programs. Staff recommendation for proposed climate action committee that would like feedback from council on. And then to present an assessment tool that helps operationalize equity and climate together in the city. We started in our part one of this talking about what we've been able to achieve with equity and climate as council goals. And as we transitioned to them as city values, how do we continue to see and operationalize that throughout the city? So we'll start with some climate updates. And there is, there continues to be so much great work happening on all, I think, eight or nine. And there's more kind of programs within our climate work. And today, we're just going to focus on three of them. Based on the recommendations from our council meeting last time, and then as a result of the collaboration that we're doing between our two areas, wanted to prioritize the updates on things that highlight community-led climate actions, that increase our community outreach and engagement efforts within our climate action, and that also integrate and center equity within our existing programs. And so that is going to be updates on our urban forestry, our home energy score, and energy efficiency upgrades, and outreach and engagement in general. There could be a lot more on each of these, including the building decarbonization and electrification. And I really appreciate all the resources that the mayor you sent ahead of time. And I feel like we're due for a work session just on that topic. And so I just wanted to preface that that is coming, but not what you'll see in this in today.
And I forgot to say one thing at the beginning, which is, you know, these amazing humans have like, again, taken their massive programs and kind of slummed it down to a few updates here tonight. But to get us all through it in the hour we have, we would love to hold, if possible, questions on the climate portion. Katie's going to go first until they're done with that. Then we'll take questions, kind of discuss that. Then we'll have Gabriela do her portion, take questions at the end, if that is okay.
All right. Thanks, Ellen. So without further ado, let's get started on our urban forestry. So I've been working with our tree board and our urban forester, Courtney Wilson. And we have identified kind of our top priorities for 2025. And these are shared strategies that we're implementing with, with Tree Board that you'll hear about next week at our, our Tree Board update. But it's to equitably reach 40% canopy coverage by 2040, which is our, one of our climate goals as a city. Implement responsive urban forestry services. Build relationships and trust with residents. I think we've talked about it a little bit at council, but right now, one of our, with limited staff capacity, oftentimes our first touchstone with community is enforcing code or enforcing violations. And that is very detrimental to building our relationship, but then also fostering a sense of stewardship and belonging with our urban forest. And so wanting to be able to increase our engagement and our responsive programs to have something, have, have relationships that align more with our values. And then build internal capacity and expertise on urban forest equity. And so our plans to move these priorities forward kind of center on two outputs. First, we are working on an equity implementation plan. So right now, for the urban forestry work, we have a urban forest management plan. And this is a incredible document that highlights, that really sums up technical expertise and highlights the programs, policies, and efforts we need to do to, to manage a really healthy and resilient urban forest. The equity implementation plan would be a roadmap to prioritize this, this great planning document that really focuses and brings in the social and community aspect into its more technical document. And so it's going to center a lot of community engagement on how we can create responsive programming and create some additional services that help us bring more agency to our community members and also have our, our programs going to meet folks where they're at. We're also going to work on updating our Branch Out Milwaukee map. For those who don't know, we have a really great assessment tool right now that it's an interactive map that you can see where we have the highest tree canopy and then where it also intersects with Urban Heat Island Index, Urban Heat Index, Air Pollution Index, Medium Household Income, and Populations of Color. And so we can really use it as a equity strategy for planting. And we, one, this data is outdated from about 2014. And we want to make it a little bit more actionable as an assessment tool in terms of highlighting where there's plantable land and what are some of the barriers to achieving that. If the, if it needs, is it deep, is it paved, is it not paved? What type of zoning structure is it under? And then be able to add the three different years of data we have at this point, 2014, 2019, and 2024, to do some analysis on where we are seeing tree canopy loss or growth. And then also align that with what we know from our tree permits so that we can have a more educated, more educated strategies on reaching that 40%. Our plan over the next year to get there, to get to both of these, is starting with our phase one, we're calling it listening and learning. June through September, we are embarking on a significant community engagement effort. We have some grant funding to help us provide stipends to community members and also work with a consultant to help us get a little bit more capacity to do this. And we'll be doing listening sessions with, focused on culturally specific groups, a technical advisory group, public workshops, survey, and then also lots of tabling and engagement. We will then develop our recommendations between October and January and be updating the Branch Out Milwaukee map so that we can then look at what are we hearing as the needs and priorities for community and how do we then look at kind of the technical strategies and tools to, to get there? And then we've built in times to go back to community on what we've heard and then hoping to publish the, the Equity Implementation Plan by May 2026. So then, all right, we're already moving on. We're at Home Energy Score. So our Home Energy Score program is a really great tool that helps folks have much more information about what, what their home, what is kind of in the walls or in the attic and opportunities to make it more energy efficient. There are, and then it kind of ends, like it is a, I think of it as a nutritional label. It's like, this is the information on the back of the food, but what you do with that information is totally up to you. And so one thing that I've been working on is partnering with Community Energy Project to decrease the barriers for folks to access these home energy scores. For most people, they are required to get it when they sell their home. And then we have a fund that provides a free home energy score when low-income folks are selling their home. It is, it is not the most utilized, it's good information, and it helps us track a lot of things. And kind of switching that into like actually making those upgrades often doesn't happen. And so we have kind of ensured that there's enough funds and taken out the barrier for low-income folks to get a home energy score regardless if they're selling a home or not. And then been able to weave together three different state funding opportunities to have around $18,000 per house to actually implement the findings from home energy scores. And so we are able to do this with the funds we have for about 20 different homes in Milwaukee. And so I'm really thrilled to be able to do this. And we're going to be prioritizing, I mean, 20 is a various, it's a, it's an incredible start and it's a small number. And so we are prioritizing homes right now without heat and limited insulation. This often looks like homes and manufactured homes, so mobile homes, will have the most limited insulation and so that people can stay comfortable and have heat and be more energy efficient while saving energy, saving money on their bills. And so I do think that this is an opportunity that, as we can continue to weave together the incentives, promote council's goal around affordability and increase energy efficiency around, around the city. So we're continuing to advocate right now in the 2025 legislative session to, for these programs and are working to see how they'll kind of be budgeted and appropriated in the coming months. Next, we have kind of three different updates or opportunity, new opportunities for greater outreach and engagement within all of our climate work. First is that our team is going to start our very own Climate and Natural Resources quarterly newsletter, which I'm pretty excited about. We, this is going to be an opportunity, we, the pilot is such a great thing that our community has and all like looks towards. Our social media is another one. And the amount of things that we wish we could put into that far exceeds what we can do with just that one platform that's supposed to be kind of around all city topics and services. And so this will be an opportunity to educate and power, energize Milwaukians on all of our climate programs. We also want it to be a place that we emphasize the why of what we're doing around our initiatives and have a little bit more to bring people along. And then raise awareness on a lot of the topics that are highlighted in our Climate Action Plan, Urban Forest Management Plan, Stormwater Management Plan. We have a lot of strategies within these documents that hinge upon raising awareness that we don't really have a great avenue to do so right now. So this will be a quarterly newsletter. Our first issue is going to be in June. And the new city website, once that's published, is going to have an avenue, is going to have a place for newsletters built into it. And so it'll be a place that people can sign up. And if another kind of city topic or program wants to have it, it'll like a drop-down menu for the topics you want to stay updated about from the city. And then you can select that when you like select, you want to stay up to date on the pilot or things like that. And kind of what we expect in content each month or each quarter is promoting educational materials, but then also sharing. is promoting educational materials, but then also share successes of relevant city and community programs, council actions related to climate and natural resources, and then always opportunities to get more involved and learn more. Another great engagement, so that one is kind of outreach. And then this one, the next one, opportunities around engagement. We just had a really, I was, Gabriella invited me to the Equity Steering Committee last week to talk about some of the initiatives that we're doing in our climate work and see where there is interest and opportunity to get more involved. And one of the takeaways from that is we're going to start two subcommittees focused on some of our climate work in the Equity Steering Committee. The first one is really focusing on that equitable engagement for our urban forest work. And so looking for the the subcommittee will really be focusing on helping us design an equitable engagement effort and and plan, helping bridge relationships within the community. Like I said, we're we're operating with maybe a little bit of a trust deficit. And so these really trusted community leaders helping, yeah, start that relationship and get folks that we haven't heard from in the past involved in this process will be really important. And then helping us kind of stay accountable to what we hear. And then if our recommendations that we develop really meet the need that we heard from community. And so being a more engaged kind of participant in that phase two as well of like, did we meet the mark with what we're planning? The second subcommittee is going to be around the Building Decarbonization Policy Analysis. And so there are kind of, there are multiple policies that that get out built electrification and building decarb work and three that are kind of gaining traction. First is the state's Building Performance Standards. That's already been passed and will be implemented. But the city has the opportunity to go above or we can either kind of create a higher threshold or expand who that is applied to. There's also the opportunity to do a home energy score rental program. So again, that's more of that information awareness that right now our HES is only for single family homes. And so we can provide that kind of nutritional label for our multifamily. And then third is kind of a a carbon impact fee. And this would be for new residential or significantly remodeled residential. And this is kind of like an appliance or, yeah, an appliance fee based off of the the social impact of carbon. And it's it's a fee on appliances that produce certain pollutants, mainly natural gas burning appliances. And so knowing that there are these kind of three bodies of policies that can all look very different in how they're implemented in each city. I wanted to start with the the ESC to help us really center environmental justice and climate justice principles into this policy development by helping us think about ensuring that the policy maximizes benefits for frontline communities while minimizing burdens, ensures communities are able to share and design in climate solutions, and then also improve the quality of life and health equity. And so starting from that place and building what the policy specifications are around that, I think is a good way to navigate this very complex policy sphere. So last is the Proposed Climate Action Committee. So we had our outreach engagement, and I feel like this one's really about co-creation. And so Peter and I have done a lot of kind of reflecting and strategizing and talking to other cities about the pros and cons of having a a climate committee structure. And based off of kind of our reflections in other cities, we feel like it is a really great way to accountably track implementation for our Climate Action Plan, embed our value of sustainability and center community input throughout both of those processes. And so we've developed a proposed or a recommended charter that we think would help us do that. We we modeled it after kind of how ESC functions and also the Treeboard, which is a advisory body to city council and staff. And that's helping us first at the beginning, their kind of the initial priorities are focusing on our existing work. And so really focusing in on supporting the analysis and development of policies for our two largest greenhouse gas emitting sectors, which is transportation and building decarbonization, advising staff and council in our greenhouse gas inventory that we're doing this year and kind of what what we do after that. And then also helping us as we dig into a 2026 Climate Action Plan update and thinking through what does that look like? All the components that it will take to do that? And how do we really think about adaptation and climate resilience too, as well as mitigation in this in this climate, in this Climate Action Plan update? This would likely launch in the fall. I mean, the soonest it could launch is in the fall. I know we're in a recruitment right now with our other committees, but this would likely happen after that. So we would do recruitment over the summer. And then I would serve as the the staff liaison. And so wanted to see, A, wanted to start with kind of gauging Mural's interest in in starting a additional committee. This is the end, so now we can talk.
Anything you've heard to date, including the proposal for.
Well, do you want to start there or do you want to? Yeah, why don't we start there since you posed that question?
Thoughts on the committee?
I think that this is very thoughtful. I think it's actually a really exciting connection between traditional environmentalism and intersectional environmentalism. And I, if, there's a, there's this really great book called The Intersectional Environmentalist that really talks about like how you blend strategies around, you know, climate action with, with like human centered and respecting and kind of uplifting strategies. And it sounds like a lot of what you're proposing. So I think it's really, I think it's really great. My only worry is around capacity because, you know, we only have you. But then the other thing is like, when you really love and believe in the work that you're doing, then it hardly feels like work. So I really want to just trust your leadership around this. And, you know, if you feel like you have the capacity and you have the support and and the the structure within the city, you know, to make this sustainable for you, then yeah, go for it. That's my call.
Thank you.
Katie, I broke out into a sweat listening to this because it was like a lot of work. Okay, and so it kind of gets back to the issues of why I just almost be mindful of that. And I think it's a great idea to have a, you know, a committee. I will tell you that one of my biggest areas of concern is when I see the requirement for a non-person committee. That's a lot of people, especially if it gets kind of bad and we have all of those sort of quorum issues and everything like that. Just getting a quorum, you know, can be a challenge, especially if you're meeting every month or something like that. And so I'm for it. Just a little bit concerned that maybe that. I'm sure that there will be a lot of people who want to participate in this. But I would just caution, you know, size. We have some challenges in some of our committees and in boards and commissions with size and filling the roles and that kind of thing. And you're going to have ups and downs where you have a lot of applicants and then you're going to have some dry spells. And size doesn't really matter. But that's really my only point about the app. I have some other questions, which I'll wait until others have a chance to talk about.
Yeah, I I'm along the same lines. I I just worry about capacity because we got rid of the DLC because of capacity, right? So and they had trouble keeping their numbers up and having participants. And I know it's they're two different things, but again, I'm sure there's plenty of people passionate about designing landmarks as well. So I just worry about the capacity. This is great, and I'd like to see this for the long haul. I just, I would hate for it not to, you know, we also have trouble with filling it. You know, I don't want it to go away if we're going to create it, in other words, right? Because I I see it's just as important as the ESC, right? It's similarly as important and there's a lot of intersection with that stuff. So it might be a little bit bit of a lift, but as as Counselor Stavendor said, I mean, obviously you wouldn't be here if people didn't trust your judgment, right? So yeah, I'm for it. Just again, just caution on the side of the capacity part.
I would, I had the same reaction as also Massey. Nine members seems like a lot. I've seen a lot of work groups or advisory community in the legislature fall apart or just be ineffective for big community people. So I think tightening that up to five member board would be more effective. I do like that you have seats reserved for youth members. But I do think if you're breaking this idea of the committee, that set aside would be challenging. So I think about how, if the recruitment process can intentionally do outreach to people at MHS or other specifically youth focused areas. And then the intentionality, as the mayor points to, is to think about who could be I don't think it needs to be codified into the dialogue of the committee. But I I think that that is a good thing for us to overlook. I do, in terms of the charge of this committee, I'm really excited about the first two things that you're tackling, building transportation. There's a real intersection with our TSP. And I worry, I'm so sad that the time is like they're overlapping, but it won't quite give the climate committee the same ability to land on that process. And I guess what I would want to see is imagining this committee was able to start early on in the TSP process. How would this committee interact with our existing plans, with our planning commission and our other work? How are we consulting with them? Frankly, this is a question I have about the ESC. How is the ESC being brought into these longer planning pools? So understanding how it fits into these existing workflows, I think, would be really helpful. But I do, just setting all of this aside, I think it's easy for us as a body to weigh all of these different competing factors. We see it in any level of policymaking. And that, I think, has been a reason why a lot of climate action work doesn't get prioritized because you're weighing the fact you want economic growth, you want certain other things. You want to make sure all of these factors are weighed. And I think that this is a good accountability measure for us as a body. If you have a body that's focused solely on the climate goals that we have set and making sure that our actions align with that, I think it's a good counterbalance to our work here for somebody to be able to say, you set this goal in the past, this policy that you have is out of line with that goal. I think that's helpful feedback.
It sounds like you and Peter, you know, discussed and talked to other cities. So I think that's great. You know, you're making an informed recommendation here based on what you've heard from other cities. So I'm supportive of it. I, I would call out a couple of things. One is outreach. I would hope that this committee, we don't usually expect our committees to engage in outreach. The only one that really does is the Arts Committee. They do a lot of events and sort of outreach, but it seems to me like outreach could be a part of the role of this committee. And I'd like to see us amplify the number of people who are taking your newsletter and whatever other tools and getting them out there into PTO meetings and into NDA meetings and into, you know, other groups around town or having a booth in the farmer's market or whatever it may be. So I do hope we create an outreach expectation on this committee. On youth, you know, Counselor Stavendor knows, has done a lot of work on this and and Scott Stopper and and Nicole before that, trying to recruit youth. It's sometimes been tough. I think this is one area where there's already active youth organizations. And I think this may be one committee where we don't have as much trouble recruiting youth as we sometimes do. So I love the idea of, I mean, if you follow what happened in Ashland, it was the youth that pushed Ashland to where they are. So I like the idea of youth members. I think the, I don't know that I'm, you know, whether the magic number is set at five to nine. But if you're counting off a couple of the nine as youth members and you're then thinking seven, nine, anyway, I I'm not going to have an opinion on how many members, although I do agree that nine sounds a lot. I did not know, I think the timing is good to bring them, you know, start at the fall, if that's sort of on the heels of or as as we're doing the greenhouse gas inventory. I did not know we were thinking of a of a Climate Action Plan update next year. So that was news to me. But it makes sense if that's the plan to, yeah, to get them started with fall.
Thank you for this very rich feedback. I think it touched on a lot of the pieces that Peter and I went back and forth on. Capacity, number of people, how do we keep like, if, how do we center additional community engagement with this like process that we want to be like a co-creation with community? So thank you all.
So let's then go back to
Questions on other slides.
So I definitely had some on housing energy score, but I guess let's start with urban forestry since that's where you started. People have questions, comments.
Can we actually go back to the first slide, which has? There, right there. So you said this Branch Out Milwaukee was from 2014?
The data is from 2014, the map we published in 2019.
Okay. Oh, is that the Metro LiDAR data?
Is it Metro? Okay, that was P S U.
The the map Vivek Shanda's through PSU helped us publish it, but the data is based on Metro's LiDAR data.
Yeah, and I understand that's, I thought I heard that that was every ten years.
Every five. So they have, yeah, we have existing data from 2019 and then we have the 2014 data. And then they're cleaning up, they have done the LiDAR scan and they're cleaning up and sending to all the jurisdictions their data from 2024.
So I will tell you that, you know, I I explored, you know, this section of the city website a couple of times. It's just, it's a treasure trove of information. But, you know, how do you get there? How do you, how do you point people to it? That's the, that's the biggest issue, I think. And maybe, you know, maybe the city council can have that. I, you know, I wrote note to myself, maybe I want to highlight this in the, in one of my pilot or something like that. Because, you know, this is not unique. We have a lot of good information that kind of gets, kind of gets lost and that kind of thing. So that's just an observation. But my question was for the Equity Implementation Plan. Pretty good off a high level, you know, goodness. But I mean, can you pull it down to, can you give me one use case in the Equity Implementation Plan to help me get my arms around this?
Yeah, I'll give you two. So first, City of Portland just published, they just did an Equity Implementation Plan for their urban forest plan published last week. And so it's like a very similar process that I've modeled after ours. I think one possible thing that might come out of this is doing it, we might hear from community that maintaining trees is a real barrier and burden. And then we will take that and do some analysis and say, I think with our staff capacity and our funding, we can provide private tree maintenance for low income, for households that are under a threshold of low income or a certain vulnerable community. And then that really helps. And so then that is a component in our equity implementation plan. That is like the city is going to start this private tree maintenance program.
And maintaining trees is not inexpensive.
And Peter has experience in, from Illinois, that they did a similar, very selective private tree maintenance, they provided assistance for that. And They provided assistance for that, and with their kind of like equity prioritization, they were able to keep it pretty reasonable within capacity and budget. And so I, I appreciate that he has, uh, additional experience to help us think that through a little bit.
I just had something go through my brain, and it was like, I think all the arborists and tree maintenance companies out of there ought to have at least some percentage of promo work.
Well, there you go. So on branch out, and I, I mean, I, I have the same feeling about how do we let people know about it? Because I do, a couple of times I've been like, you know, here, go here, and then I send people the link. Um, it might be the kind of thing where a video that sort of shows, picks a property or shows an example of how it works would be useful to, you know, get out there on social media and stuff. That's, yeah. I mean, just giving people links, um, only goes so far, but if they actually see, oh, look at all the data. So I just wanted to throw that there as an idea. Um, any other comments on this slide from anyone?
I just had a question. Um, when you're talking about plantable land, and you mentioned paved, is the strategy to get more, um, trees planted above grade, like in containers, or is the strategy to de-pave or both?
Um, I think more of the de-pave. I, um, in my head, we are looking at, um, probably like one or two tiers or three tiers of like, this is like city-owned property, property that is plantable-ready. And then we have, um, like, very easily accessible land, or like, we own the land, but it's under pavement. And then third tier is like private and under pavement, or something like that, that helps us really see, it helps us get to the strategies of reaching 40%, because I don't think even just with a survey of all the plantable land, we can reach that. And so then what are the barriers? Is it that we wanna have like a stronger private, um, planting outreach program? Or do we wanna have a stronger, like, public de-paving effort? Um, and so understanding where that land exists and what are the barriers?
Do we have partnerships with de-pave that we could pull on to, like, do some of those efforts here in Milwaukee?
Yeah, I've, I've worked a lot with de-pave and they're fantastic. And, um, Public Works actually also has a lot of the capacity too. And so, um, de-pave is, one of their, like, greatest strengths is how beloved they are, and their waiting list is like, they are popular. And so, like, working with them to help us, um, continue the, the values that they have in each of their events, and being able to provide kind of the, the power and the tools and the expertise to do that ourselves too. So I think we're, we're looking probably out of both and.
Okay, awesome. And I would say where you, where you're talking about pavement near streams, our watershed councils are absolutely likely partners that would like to help us with that. And I know Peter's been thinking about, um, in the groundwater master plan process, like, um, how we can incentivize more de-paving around our streams.
Can I, to your question about outreach that these groups should be doing, and the outreach about how we're sharing this information, in the newsletter you talked about virtual, is that printed? I guess I was.
My vision is, um, virtual. I think Peter's is printed, and we haven't fully decided yet.
Maybe a quarterly big mailer or a biannual big mailer. Can it go in the pilot? Don't we do inserts in the pilot sometimes?
They're also not deep, but.
Yeah, I think the reason why I was thinking virtual is because it would be, um, we wouldn't have to identify a new kind of sustainable funding place for that right now. Um, and because we thought of opposite reasons of why those are both important, I think we still need to figure out what's the best vehicle for it. I didn't think of a insert to the pilot, so that's also.
Well, I was gonna say, maybe it's worth at least a first issue on paper, but like big in the, on the front page saying, if you wanna see more of these, you need to subscribe.
Yeah, my, my last question is the assessment questions. Are these tailored to, is this internal questions?
We're gonna get to that.
Let me get us there.
Well, I had some questions on the home energy score, yeah. So I was super excited about this 20 homes. I think this is exciting because, I mean, I've heard for years that we have some money to do something with Community Energy Project, and I never knew we were actually doing anything, so it's really exciting. Um, are you identifying, you said you were prioritizing homes without heat? And how are you identifying them? That's not just homes that people are trying to sell, so they have to do the home energy score. You have some other way to identify the homes without heat?
So the, the graphic on the side is a door hang that I designed with Community Energy Project. And so I am doing door-to-door canvassing right now. I'll start in the next week and a half. Um, and, um, I'm gonna start with the, um, King Court mobile home. And, um, then, uh, Community Energy Project has kind of initial, um, question, questions to ask, um, to ensure that we're prioritizing those most in need. And so I'll, I'll ask around kind of if they have heat and what, um, if they're interested, but then also they'll go through a more, um, kind of thorough screening with, uh, home, with Community Energy Project.
Okay, and so they have done retrofits on manufactured homes before? Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. Um, go ahead.
Can I ask about home energy score? You said it's for single-family homes, and then we're working a lot on middle housing in the city. How homes, what, like, do you think are those getting home energy score as well?
Let me get back to you. I don't wanna say the wrong thing.
I was gonna say, it's my understanding from when we adopted it, that it's anything that's sold as opposed to rented. So I would have thought condos, I mean, we don't have very many condos, but we have some condos.
Yeah.
I would have thought condos are having to do home energy scores as well, because it's linked to when you post something to sell it, right? That's what triggers you having to do it. Um, I like the idea of a part of, of a rental program, and I guess, I mean, and especially an apartment rental program, just because of having the data about some of these bigger apartment complexes and how energy efficient or inefficient they are. I mean, you wouldn't presumably have to do whole buildings. You could just target a few, you know? Um, but, uh, but yeah, it hasn't, it wasn't built to be a rental program. It was definitely built in the first phase to be, uh, triggered by the sale of the home. I didn't think that form of housing mattered, my, my recollection. The form of housing didn't matter, but it's the sale ownership as opposed to rental. But I do feel like our, you know, we have a lot of, you know, I mean, it would be, it would be interesting to know what the energy use and waste is at some of these larger apartment complexes.
Do we have a rental registry within the city? We have our, your, your landlord wants to get a business license, so that's the closest thing we have. We don't have a specific rental registry. I mean, I think, like, in line with our strategy, our goal around affordability, and making sure that Milwaukee is livable for everyone, it seems like, you know, this conversation around, you know, equity and environmental justice is really closely paired with social justice, as it should be. It makes me think about the need to connect with the, with, I don't know, in some way with people that are in rental units, to make sure that they are aware of the resources that are available to them, and some things that they might be able to do to help with, um, with their energy. Like, I had a conversation with someone who's living in an apartment complex here in Milwaukee, and, um, they were shocked that their, uh, electricity bill was so high because they had been turning down their heat. Um, but it actually turns out that their whole complex has this, uh, like, it's, it's a mandatory heat minimum that the thermostats are set at regardless of what you operate it at. And it's because that protects their pipes from freezing. So I can see that from, you know, a perspective of a landlord, that, you know, you wanna prevent a really expensive and traumatic experience. But on the other side, then if it's set at that minimum, then someone who thinks that they're doing the right thing for their own budget and turning their heat down, turns out to be, you know, not as great a strategy as they thought. So I just, I don't know, it kind of seems like when we think about communities that are going to be affected by these programs at a disproportionate rate, it seems like renters, you know, have a larger part of the Venn diagram.
And there were, in some of the, um, electrification, you know, incentive programs, there were ones for landlords. Like, I know somebody who, you know, used an incentive to put a, a heat pump in a, you know, rental unit. There were incentives for landlords to some of that. I don't know how long those have been allowed, and, you know, how big they are, you know, but, um, there have been some of those. And, and they would be good things to apply.
Um, I had another question about the, um, the implementation of this. Like, I'm seeing state partnerships and I'm seeing the city stepping up, but there's a weatherization program with the county, and I'm wondering, like, how are they involved? And should they be involved more?
So CEP did, um, outreach to them at the beginning, because we were gonna see if they wanted to, they have quite a long waiting list right now, and so if they wanted to, like, take the, like, 20 next ones or the 20 most qualifying and use this instead to achieve those outcomes. Um, and that's not really how their process works. And I do think we could do, we could have a bigger conversation of how do we move forward together? Versus like, we have these funds that we really wanna use quickly before they might disappear. And let's talk about how we do this together, big picture, right?
Just to speak on that, Counselor, we actually had at the CAB, we actually had both the weatherization and, uh, uh, Energy Trust for Income and Present at our last CAB meeting, and they talked about this. So Energy Trust is so backlog, or excuse me, this county is so backlog that now they're, they're starting to work with Energy Trust to kind of, because a lot of people apply for the counties, but they may not qualify. So they're trying to shorten that list by getting the ones that don't qualify, um, because the counties is more income-based, that they're given to Energy Trust, because Energy Trust isn't really based on income qualification, so to speak. They can handle more of the middle income, people that may not qualify for the county. So initially, they weren't doing that, and now they're starting to trickle in more and more. And then I got a call from somebody from Energy Trust that told me that the county has kind of opened it up now, and they're, they're really starting to flow more.
That's great.
So, yeah, to hopefully shorten up that waitlist. But that's a great question, because I wonder, because we talked about this too, and this is a huge deal, so it'd be interesting to see if with the waitlist being shortened, if maybe there is room for now us, because we're specific to low income.
Right.
So that'd be, that's a good, that's a nice question.
And as we're doing your outreach, um, the, I had an amazing set of conversations with McKenna Vento team at the Wichita Center. So they operate through North Clackamas School District. And they have specialists that are in a lot of Milwaukee schools. But they might be able to help with some of the outreach for households that have youth that are, um, experiencing, you know, inconsistency around heat. Um, and they might know that anecdotally, so that, you know, as, as you're doing your outreach to find these 20 homes, it might be worth touching base with that team. So they might have a list for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I do think, as we talked about the implementation and visualization, I appreciate that the homeowners are doing this, and I don't minimize that. But I think there's also a conversation about how do we change systemically? Like, we need to just be doing so much work. And I think about the email that you sent there about what some of those systemic changes look like. Uh, and I really do think that this is a great spot for a new equity committee to build policies, to find how do we tie these specific programs for individual households? What is the systemic approach? Can we balance all of these things? I think this is, I love that we're focusing on two areas, transportation or buildings, uh, and really having clear guidance from them.
I, yeah. A whole lot to share and might.
We'll let you have.
And I think our CEP friends, they can come across, they're thirty minutes, they say it's fine.
I was gonna say, we could, I'd be happy to come back, or one, we could do, focus on the assessment tool piece of it, and I can come back with updates later, or what?
Keep it going.
Keep it going, yeah.
Can I ask one really quick, last final question? Equity Steering Committee Subcommittee on Climate versus actual climate committee, what is the difference or overlapping? And maybe you'll cover it in the conversation.
No, I have a similar question. Yeah, because I think my understanding when I asked that, they're concentrated on two factors of the work, but specifically accountability to the climate action plan was my understanding some of the difference. But if you want to add on to that.
I think that's a great question. One, we kind of have been working towards making these subcommittees for longer and didn't know where kind of the process of the Climate Action Committee would land. And I have seen other subcommittees work together, like PARB and the ESC working together. And so in my head, the, um, uh, and like the Urban Forestry Subcommittee is gonna be working with the Tree Board. And so that will be kind of like, uh, a good example of how they will, um, kind of provide some, the ESC members will provide some recommendations and work with Tree Board to develop that equitable engagement framework. And same for the, the building decar policies and really thinking about, um, what are the, like, the social and climate justice values we need to start with? Where are the social issues that intersect with, um, these different policies we're talking about? And then who are the key groups we need to talk to first? In my head, that conversation is probably gonna happen before we start the climate committee over the next four months. And then, once the climate committee starts, then we, we are coming with a place of like, here are the key groups and social issues we need to think about when we're talking about this building decarb. And so it is, and then the ESC members are continuously part of that conversation. But it feels like a good aligning timeline to, to center equity first while, and then it align with the regular process.
There's some time sensitivity that we didn't wanna wait, and didn't know what the direction would be from this group. But I foresee a lot of joint meetings of the, the CAC.
Good question. Okay, then, I'll transition over. I'll kind of speed through then a little bit of my section. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, okay. So not in this recent packet, but in our previous packet, and happy to attach again, we have the 2024, 2024 to 2027 City of Milwaukee Equity Plan. And it was laid out into the three tracks you see in front of you. Our track one are actions led by me in partnership with our newly internal, here's another fun committee, here we go, our internal equity committee. Um, and they help, they help me as core function, leading implementation of the city's equity programming. The track two focus, our areas explored by the Equity Steering Committee, our external group here, um, in support of with me and, um, Emma Segura, our city manager. And that track three piece is a little bit of my role, um, with the coordinator and as well as the ESC, having, uh, citywide projects with a heavy kind of equity nexus built into it. Um, and this includes from a range of projects from hubs, TSP, Milwaukee Police Department, and especially climate and natural resources. So we'll get a little bit, I'll touch on a little bit of an update of all three of them. So kind of with that track one, um, I mentioned the IUC was relaunched. Um, it was previously an internal group, and I believe in 2019, and now reestablished in twenty, fall of 2024. Um, and they've identified a main interest in community engagement, centralizing our efforts internally, city training, and accessibility. And some of the work that I have here highlighted that we wanted to update, um, was their active, their active participants in the city's internal community engagement forum. It's a monthly meeting of staff who conduct public outreach, share lessons learned, and find opportunities for conciseness and, uh, community engagement efforts. They're also reviewing equity performance metrics and supporting the development of the data to eventually have dashboards for the city. Um, we're also developing a formal request for proposals for solicitation for training consultants. Um, so this is more focused on more equitable. So this is more focused on more equitable procurement processes and having kind of on-call training consultants for our staff. Then that last piece is developing, which we have out in front of you as one of the attachments shared, a citywide climate and equity toolkit that will have you review and discuss towards our end of our time together kind of here in a few. After I get some of the slides through. But this is essentially a tool to create more equitable and climate project focused centered outcomes. And that's a little bit of that track one piece. We'll get back to the tool. But for track two, E S C identified their main priorities for focus in twenty twenty five. And this includes digital accessibility. E S C is right now excited and helping in the process, not quite yet, but we've mentioned already relaunching of updating our external website. They want to be a part of that process in partnership with our community communications project manager, really emphasizing the user friendliness, accessibility and ease of identifying information. This will definitely be a great process and something they're excited for. That is, speaking of timely times of transitions, when we're improving our processes. So for that second item, they also have theirs, they've actively been vocal around the city's presence on social media and providing posts and ideas and hashtags to get more community outreach participation. And also connecting youth to city and government excitement. Okay, so there's a little bit that for digital accessibility for engagement pathways. E S C wants to help identify potential part, community partners in support of relationship building, helping develop outreach materials that tell the story of the city's commitment to equity. This can look like one pagers, videos, they've identified swags and of course stickers as well. And then E S C will continue to vet and select Milwaukee Community Events Fund applications, reviews to fund, and we already have wrapped up, I think we closed our segment this past end of February and are having our second round of events that they'll start reviewing at the end of our March meeting here in a couple of weeks. So that will be continued work that the E S C has identified and excited for. And then I will be joining us later in May with an update for our equity metrics work that we've focused on for the Milwaukee community vision. Okay. Some exciting news that I, I felt the mayor would be excited to hear was officially this year, E S C and PARB, our Parks and Recreation Board, agreed to form a temporary subcommittee to review the city's policies and procedures for naming facilities. And the subcommittee's comprised of three PARB members and three E S C members. And our first meeting just took place February nineteenth, which focused on introductions, sharing about a little bit of background and context to behind Milwaukee's naming initiative and kind of charting the work ahead and what that could look like. And we have a little bit identified of steps we'd like to take here. So it is review the city's current naming policy and resolution. That was first created or updated last in the year two thousand. Identify other key groups who should be involved. Research and discuss other naming policies across the Portland metro to narrow recommendations for our current naming policies. And this includes N C P R D's recent update. And based on this new policy, making recommendations for our current parks and land naming requests, including Roman Bray and Balfour Parks was something that PARB was very active in, in wanting to be a part of and initiating that. So this will be something in collaboration, myself, Peter Passarelli, our Public Works Director, and as well as Adam Moore, our Parks Coordinator. Okay, and I think right now we temporarily are meeting once a month as well. All right, and so this is a follow-up on Police Chief Ryan Burdick's presentation earlier this year around the statistical transparency of policing data. And I wanted to share an update on some of our collaborative next steps that we've taken for related to sharing the, the data with the rest of the department. So he and I currently are hosting monthly check-ins where we're sharing updates and information. He is also in the process of creating mission and, and mission values for the M P D department. I don't think he has it quite on his agenda when he's going to have that publicly shared, but he's focused on that internal piece of accountability and values to equitable policing. And then we recently collaborated together as well too for the Police Chief Statement about immigration enforcement and sharing an update to our community for that. And that was thanks to our P I O, Public Informations Officer, Mark Inman. And happy to share that link. I'm sure you all have seen it already. And we made, ensured it was available in English and Spanish. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. We might identified that also E S C is interested in having another meeting with Police Chief. They were very impressed and hearing about his commitment to his new leadership and direction with leading the department and would like him to have a follow-up with the stock data report and kind of where the next steps for his department looks like. And we've also identified some potential opportunities, one including in the fall, for additional bias awareness and de-escalation trainings coming in the next couple of years. So that's all in the horizon. Okay, I think we made it then to the tool. Okay, I'll definitely open up to any questions of the items above. But before I do, I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of what led us to this tool. So as we mentioned, to further operationalize equity and climate into city projects and practices, Katie and I've developed this tool together and in partnership with I E C, who will be also reviewers. And this set of questions is designed to spark a change in process to be, to have more equitable and climate conscious project delivery. This tool is designed for more infrastructure projects, planning process, policy development and program implementation, and integrating it into our community engagement guide as for our internal staff and our consultants to reference for this piece. So when they ask, how do you lead engagement? How do you lead your project delivery? We can reference this tool and these questions for starting place. Okay. These were the questions we wanted to ask you all about the tool, but happy to answer any questions about the other items and updates. But it is, what are your initial impressions and main takeaways? Any particular section that stood out to you? And how could this tool be beneficial as you work through your new council work and goals?
I just had two quick things about the previous items that you discussed. With regard to digital accessibility, I think a lot about the availability of, computers and devices and how we might be able to bridge some of those gaps. So I think people often go to the library to use a computer. And I wonder if there's a way to change at least one or two of the computer's landing pages to have like a way for people to engage with some of the things, like either send it to your newsletter or to, you know, some landing screen that would be really welcoming for, for folks that maybe don't get electronic communications otherwise. And then the other thing around digital accessibility is that people will sometimes, you know, only access things online through their phone. And so like making sure that, that the things that we're sending out are formatted to be, you know, accessible and, and easy to use on a mobile device. I'm sure that there are some kind of like, you know, basic policies around that. But I think like sometimes that it has to do with when you're filling out forms and the orientation of things and stuff like that. So that always comes to mind for me. And then the other thing that I was, you know, when we reviewed the stock data, I had questions about the review, like frequency for certain policies. And one that comes to mind for me always is use of force policy. I think that there are some policies across law enforcement organizations that would really benefit from having an equity lens applied to them. And so I know that like sometimes the cycle for reviewing those policies is not as rigid or, or maybe the community doesn't find out about it. But there might be some need in like prioritizing certain policies that the E S C kind of starts with to like apply an equity lens to. So I just wanted to highlight those before we get into the tool.
And I think there was, I do want to add, there was some involvement, I want to say in twenty twenty one, they did review it in partnership with our M P D. That was actually pre, before they became the Equity Steering Committee, some of the work they did together. However, hence our naming policy that hasn't been updated since two thousand. We don't have, I think, a regular routine timeframe of when we update our policies. So I think that's a good suggestion.
Also, I truly think that you're amazing. And the work that you do is really, really thoughtful. And I think to like, you know, the start of the Equity Steering Committee and the capacity even within that group to be doing this breadth of work is really a huge benefit to the city and I hold sincerely, they hear our thanks. Because it's just, it's really, we're really, really lucky to have that perspective and that willingness from our community to, to really dig in when a lot of jurisdictions are like backing away.
I agree. I'll pass that message forward. Are there any questions here?
Are we on this? Are you asking questions on this?
If we're ready, if you didn't have any other questions about updates or so, or then I think we can transition to the questions I had for this. Thank you again for your comment with, yes, I think community partnerships are key of this. And when you talked about intersectional environmental justice, like this is what we're hoping to speak to that with this tool, so.
Could I ask, I guess, one more question after this? Hiring the equity consultation or sending out that R F P for additional consultation?
Yes, on calls, yeah, safe and inclusive city training.
Okay, why exactly does that have to be something added to our city's capacity, right? I guess, I share Rebecca's faith in you. You can do a lot of work and I'm confused where, or kind of seeing clearly what we're trying to achieve there.
Yeah, so from my, from what I've recognized when I polled our past trainers that we brought in for equity consulting, it's been direct to point. So often by people who we know or have had experience in their training. This is creating a more public, I think a more, I feel like accessible, wider outreach to multiple consultants that we may not have reached before. And I think it's also standardizing a practice where not only does it create less of a burden for staff, hey, we need a new training on this, okay, let's rework a whole new procurement process. This already has that built in where they are on call that we, we can quickly after we review their proposals, can select a few or those who have submitted to have already available and accessible identified key in these different topics.
I think what Counselor Anderson is also asking Gabriela is, you're so amazing, why can't you do all the trainings? And she is amazing. But there are, you know, some topics, so for example, fair and impartial policing is a contractor we've worked with that does police specific, you know, equity and, and biased training. Gabriela is fantastic and I'm sure could talk a lot about that content, but isn't maybe an expert in that one field. This, the R F P process that Gabriela was describing is going to be, I think, a really big step forward for working smarter. It will have an equity component, there'll be equity trainers we, we get on the roster. But we'll also get some like H R compliance trainers, which we have to do to just be a good city. But again, we typically have done like, okay, the H R department does like one-off contract here, one-off contract there. And this will be a much more efficient way to do that. And then finally we're placing, where I've got some staff who are really well trained in that, but a lot that we just don't have in a team of this size. And so we're just trying to get all those trainers on a roster at once. So it's much easier to say, cool, I need this training, let's write the task order and go. Makes sense?
Thank you.
So this, so this document is for like projects, infrastructure that were, like this is part of the R F P, I'm assuming? It was associated with the R F P project, like are, are people that are, are interested in a project in the city going to respond to this?
I think staff is. More internal, more internal staff and then engagement project delivery. So internal staff focus and then consultants we bring potentially for engagement will consult this.
So the idea might be, Counselor Closer Body, if we're thinking about doing a streets project, you know, and it's early in the sort of, it's just planning phase before it gets to its C I P project, they'd walk through this to make sure they're thinking about equity and climate implications. Or if Joseph and I are cooking up a new, you know, small business grant thing, we would walk through these questions to make sure we're developing it in that way. And I think the question, the reason we wanted to bring it to you all is, we can have staff use it, that's great. I think it might be a tool that could help you as you work on your new goals and your action setting for that. And, you know, you, climate and equity were goals, they are now, I think, values of the organization. This might be a way to help you all think, hey, as we're weighing up whether we should do this park thing or this economic development thing or this affordability thing, are we also thinking about the climate and equity implications?
So what happens after this, let's say this, let's say it is a project, right? What happens after you internally respond to it? What, what does this, what happens next with this? How does this apply to the project or does it just kill the project? Or what's the next step once you guys are assessing? Like what's the metric that you're using to say whether it goes forward or we don't do it?
That's a great question. Yeah. I, so one of our goals, when we were thinking about how it's going to be used and implemented is this is not going to decide if someone does the project or not. This is, once, this is saying, you know, once a project is decided or based on that staff's expertise, this is to help spark different considerations that they might not think of while they're planning their processes in their own expertise that deepens and further aligns their process with these values. And so it's one step later, I think there's still a good question around, will they take, will, will, what will incentivize people to do the recommendations that they outline in this process?
That's really my question.
Yeah. And so a couple of thoughts. One, we're going to work with Emma to think about where, where in our process can we implement this with some teeth? I think accountability is a really important component as well as awareness raising. I think they need to go together as strategies. And so this is the awareness raising component. And so we kind of haven't figured out yet where the accountability piece is going to go. Because Gabriela and I want to work with bringing this around to all the different departments who are going to use it before we start talking about that you have to do it and work through an example project and how someone might answer it and tweak some of the questions so that it is responsive to their normal kind of processes. And then once we get a little bit more buy-in, then we'll talk about kind of where and how it gets accountably implemented.
I think the other piece is that in some already in project delivery, we've already been brought in and some of the work they're already doing and asking these questions. I think this is just a marker when we are in that space, be like, hey, let's check this, let's check these off. Let's go through this, this list of questions. Forever for the metrics component piece, we're having also an internal piece of that with a consultant we also have in for equity analytics. And I think there is a double piece where right now it is that awareness raising. And I think we'll talk about implementation piece of it and a mapping out of where we can hold that accountability to each other. Yeah, I never want this work to prevent mission, I mean, project launching or project being led. Like this is all supplemental, help create a better outcome in the long run.
You also want to make sure that it's, it's, right, that it's not just a check, it doesn't turn into a check the box thing and then you're just blowing through the project regardless, right? Like that, that's the key. And then my other question, actually, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, I, I keep going.
My, my other question was, because I, I haven't heard this question asked before, but what does it mean when it says, will this project disrupt and or reinforce dominant culture? What does that mean?
It can mean in different ways. I feel like, I think if we revert to actually some of the training we went through when we brought, what was his name, Parfait? And we talk about pieces of white supremacy culture and dominant culture around why are we focusing on qualitative data as opposed to qualitative data, like that meaningfulness pieces? Are we prioritizing, I'm trying to think of back to that training. It could be, look like multiple different ways of disrupting the culture. But it's, all of it, I think it's to centered people and outcome and the work that we're doing. And often money, financial gain is, I think, at the center of it. And we, like when we go with a project delivery and we say, let's go with a survey. We've seen that that has had different outcomes of not meeting the community where they are or having accessible barriers to even technology that you've mentioned, right? That is kind of a dominant culture as government, well, why don't they join us at our town hall? Why don't they do our survey? It's like, what can we better make on our process improved to accessibility and meet the community?
I think it could also be kind of like, is this the status quo? And if so, why? Because maybe the status quo is working, but maybe we just haven't really thought about the status quo. but maybe we just haven't really thought about if the status quo is working or if the status quo is just the way we do it because of dominant culture. And that's a great example, Councilor, of, you know, as we take this around to different departments. I think these fabulous humans are very open to like adjusting language, taking feedback. A big part of this is, I mean, yes, equity and climate are values in our organization, but I would be lying to you if I said I didn't have skeptics in some parts of my organization. And so this is a way that you help folks see it's not, you know, just this top-down, like you must do it. It's like, it's a tool, here's why it matters, let's have a conversation. And it's been helped spark some of those conversations.
And not every project, you're going to be able to answer each.
Every question.
Yeah.
Right, so that's, okay.
The biggest thing is also the consideration. Because I feel like even disruption, this tool is a disruption itself. And in a way, the dangers that you've heard of us saying, well, this is the way we've always done it. Right? Leaves out, we've recognized the historical impacts of barriers of government has had and marginalizing community members. And so this is, how can we do this better and who's not in the room? Questions.
Yeah. I, I have two examples that come to mind on that question. One is when you mentioned the outreach that you're doing and the fact that you're paying community members to be a part of that outreach, that disrupts dominant culture. And that's an intentional decision that builds more equity in your project. And then the opposite side of this would be like, if one of our departments is going out to bid or has an RFP out and the parameters of that RFP are either very, very hard to navigate or even when you get into the budget development part of things and it has like a small percentage for indirect or administrative oversight or things like that, that lends the, the project to be open more to organizations that have really established, like, presence. You know, they've been around for a long time, they get a lot of these bids. It makes it harder for smaller organizations or community grassroots organizations to apply because they need more of that indirect support. Because they don't have the capacity of a big firm. So like, being really thoughtful about how we're framing the tools that we put into place in every single step of what we do. I mean, the system of government is actually set up to benefit a dominant, dominant culture. And so like, to disrupt that, you, you have to really kind of ask like, who is not represented at each of these steps? And I, I think, like, that's my interpretation when I read through this and the things that come to mind for me, like, we're going to put an RFP out for the Sparrow site. Those are some of the things that I want to look for to make sure that we have the, you know, the widest group of community partners that can apply instead of just some that have the capacity and have the familiarity.
Yes. So I have some, some questions and some thoughts here. I, first of all, I think that, you know, this set of questions is good. And I, you know, there can be pros and cons of the checklist mentality. I actually make checklists pretty good, you know, like, did you think of this? Think of that? Because, you know, whenever I got something going on, there's something I might miss, you know? But there's also a danger of the checklist mentality is like, yeah, yeah, we've done that. Yeah, we've got that, in a, in a, in a, and it becomes, you know, exercise of putting checks in a box. So you want, you know, you, you want to guard against that. But at the same time, you know, I, I look at this and I, I ask myself the question and I tell you, step one just got my attention, like, who is the audience here? What's the purpose of your project? Well, you know what? I think the department has known what the purpose of the project is. Do you really have to ask them that? What problem are you trying to solve? I think they know that. Okay, what's the timeline for a project? I think they know what their, their capacity is, that their department, their contract, ability, their budget, and that kind of thing. So I want this to be successful. So I, I, I don't want them, I would caution against asking them questions that they're the audience of and they know. You know, drill down to what's really important for, you know, the, the, the equity and climate piece rather than the project management piece. So I think it's pretty long, it can be kind of intimidating. Like, some of these questions are pretty open-ended. And so one of the questions is, gee, how much do I have to write on this? Okay, what's going to happen? And so I want this to be successful. So I want, you know, the more people who look at this and, and sort of take a whack at it, I think we're better.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you. I think that's really helpful input, including like, we also saw these questions, like, let's start them off feeling good that they can answer the first couple. But if we want to reduce, we can take those out. But this is a good, like, did you lay them out? Like, there's people's different understanding of processing information and laying this out. And so we're hoping, once they do, they can pinpoint gaps and opportunities, laying it all out together where they can improve and dive into the other questions. I hear you, and we could reduce it potentially and get right into the nitty-gritty of it. So I'm on board and I open all ideas. That's really helpful.
I just want it to be successful.
Yeah.
And if it's, and if beauty is a burden, then you'll have less chance of it being successful.
Yeah, it'll be interesting when you do your test runs with different departments. I mean, that may help you call down to a sure.
Yeah.
This is inspiring as a, a long one.
Exactly.
But, yeah.
I agree. I went through and counted 37 questions there. And I think trying to, like, think about how this is a workable tool. And also work, like, what comes with this? How does it, is it a written document? Is this something like, think about us applying this to our goals? It takes us so long to answer three questions. I don't know. I think this, all of these are really valuable and they look at different. I, I love all the intersectionality you've been bringing to this conversation, Councilor Seven, where I think this gets at a lot of these things. But I want to make sure the tool is workable and that it's actually implemented. To Councilor Chris Robideau's point, what is accountability look like? If we are developing something that has adverse equity impact or an adverse climate impact.
Right.
What does accountability look like?
Right.
We can't bind the hands of a future council or a future department necessarily. But there, there needs to be some level of accountability that we deal towards our commitments. Otherwise, those commitments end up hollow. And so I want to understand. So I have about 37 questions about this document.
Woo!
I would love to see, yeah, welcome to that.
Thank you. This is all greatly helpful.
A lot of those lines. I mean, I think there are going to be people who are like very willing adopters on this. They're going to say like, wow, thank you so much. I do have more questions that we can use to look into this.
Yeah.
And then I think there are going to be people who are like, you know. And so maybe it's actually grouping things in terms of like, okay, step one, define your project. Is there an overarching question that you can ask? And then maybe have bullet points or thought points that, that call out some of these other questions and just like title it like, you know, things to consider.
Yeah.
Things to think about, like, because then you really just have one question per step. And, you know, I was thinking about like, step number three. There are five of them, five steps, or five questions. All of them are amazing, but if I were to pick one that, that would be like an umbrella for this, you know, I think about like, number four, I think. You know, what does this project help improve resiliency to extreme weather and climate change hazards? And then things to think about or like further questions, that kind of thing. Then that gives you like, you know, the, the people who at least start out with a little more resistance are going to say, eh, it's only one question, okay? And maybe they read a couple of the thought points, you know? And then the people who love this and want to dig in are going to lead their teams through every single thought point.
These are Rebecca's ones.
Yeah. I'm like, only one page?
And the other piece that we didn't get fully into, this is a part two component. Because the longer one is the additional foundational theory, key definitions, that maybe we can put some of the grouping or additional questions follow-up in that section. And I don't know, we, what we didn't discuss getting quite clear is the helpful hints on the side of where to also get additional information. So in case if we're not available to answer questions or they're not sure, they can consult other existing resources that are already available to staff.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, I liked that. I liked that. All right, we did promise Joseph, Patrick, and all of them. So unless anybody else has anything pressing to add.
Thank you!
I just want to say that maybe two humans are doing just amazing work. Thank you so much. Well, thank you for that, Council. We'll get other, I think, more topical work sessions and things to come. But thank you so much for all the, the way that you are championing these values and, and holding us accountable for giving this work a form.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cut back to following.
Seriously, this is not great. Showstopper is ahead of us. What the heck? Good work. Great job. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Have fun.
Thank you. I can do this. We can do this. 30 minutes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Joseph Brillo, Assistant City Manager, here with Mandy Byrd, our Development Project Manager. We're going to talk quickly about CET. And I'm going to give you a quick overview. We had an overview back in September, but I think really the meat of this conversation tonight is about what to do with some affordable housing funds that are generated through CET. So I'm going to go through like the first several slides pretty fast. adopted by Council, I guess, 1% construction value. And it goes into a couple of different pots, economic development, affordable housing. We talked a little bit about the economic development piece back in September. That was more of the focus. Affordable housing is more of the conversation tonight. So I just wanted to reiterate what the code says and what the statute says around what these funds can be used for. It's pretty broad. It's very broad. But incentivizing construction, development, related programming for affordable housing. So there's a lot of things we can do with that. Obviously, the first round of CET affordable housing funding was used for some affordable housing construction. Just two projects up on the board. And then here, just put a pin in this, this is where the amounts stand as of September. But these haven't been updated, so there will probably be a little bit more. But that's roughly what we're working with today. And in September, one of the conversations from the affordable housing was, what are we going to do with that 450K roughly? And at that time, it was suggested by staff, recommended by staff, that we use that money for Sparrow. Sparrow is going to be an expensive construction project. It's primarily because of the infrastructure needs, especially with access, which we know about. 450 is not going to be much, quite honestly, probably to, to complete the access upgrades that are needed. But I think in order to incentivize and help whoever the developer is on that site using the funds would be very helpful. We're not just in infrastructure, STCs permitting, design and technical reports. Those are all things that are costly, and so anything helps.
And are we not, we do not need money for the affordable units at Coho? Because that's, we're getting, that's why they're getting the plan, is to fund the affordable unit.
Correct, Mayor, yes. So that's what I left you with. Moving forward, I think the conversation is a little broader today. So what I'm about to share is some other kind of conversations that we can have or other discussion points we can have regarding to this money. So really, the goal of the next 25 minutes is to provide staff some direction on what we should be thinking about with that $450,000 of CET. I threw up some recommendations that are additional to Sparrow being a revolving loan, loan program, first, first home buyer assistance program essentially, revolving loan program. It's part of the housing production strategy. It is something that we need to look at. It is something that's going to be, need to be funded, that's really going to make or break it. Whether this amount right now makes sense, that's a question for all you all. There's also funding for land banking strategies, which Sparrow is part of that, but it kind of bleeds into this larger conversation that we've been having about scattered sites. I do have a little bit of update there, too, if you're interested. So we could use the money to basically land bank and pursue the scattered sites, or at least one or two of them. And then part of that, that's also part of the housing production strategy. And then a third thing that's part of the HPS is this SDC backfilling. So we do list reductions in SDCs and permits being considered. We could certainly, we hear it all the time from developers, that SDCs are too expensive, permits are too expensive. So we could create basically a way to waive or reduce fees and then pay back ourselves, make ourselves whole. And then finally, what I would share right now is what I, what staff, staff's recommendation as of today is, I think, spend some money on Sparrow and then spend some money on revolving loan program. I think you could do some good. The, the thing with $450,000 when it comes to development, it's just, it's just not much. It's really not much. I think anything will help Sparrow and anything will help incentivize it. I just don't know if 450K is going to be great. 300K is going to be that much worse. So just things to consider. So I do, anything up there, up for grabs, your discussion, but that's.
So when you say Sparrow support, would you put that in the actual RFP? Or would that be something we hold in our pocket to base, to bring out based on what we get?
Hold it in the pocket.
Great, great question. Ideally, putting it into the RFP is, is great because you can see there's something there. But we could do it, we could do it either way. We could say it very broadly, which we started off saying last time we spoke to you about Sparrow, which is, there may be funds available.
Isn't there, doesn't the state have a revolving loan fund? Like a $75 million fund for infrastructure for affordable housing projects that we could draw from that don't charge interest?
So there's a couple of different programs, as I understand it. 15% of our CET goes to the state for first home buyer programs. I don't know how that is actually going to work.
Yeah, well, they, they have a list of organizations that provide it, that they fish out the funding to.
Whether it's specific to Milwaukee is.
Yeah.
I mean, so there is a state fund. The governor had a press release, press conference a week or two ago. I hear from people in the mayor's group that it's, that there's a bill. I guess there's a bill, this is, we had the fund, the fund was established before. The $75 million was just.
1537.
进来 recently. But I guess there's a feeling that it's not very workable for applicants. And there's some effort this session to make it, you know, to approve it.
That's good.
It does, there's the revolving loan fund, but then there's also, the governor's going to dedicate, there's Bill 3031, AG 3031 this session, to create, pay infrastructure pool of apparently 100 million. That bill, it targets 17 units per acre. Has a threshold, right, as drafted right now, of 17 units per acre. Maybe looking, that may, may be in that ballpark. I mean, we'll tell you that some of the other cities have been pushing back against that because they have bigger sort of greenfield sites where they're going to have a mix of, you know, more dens and less dens over, you know, 200 acres or whatever. Whereas we have a nice discrete piece that will be a higher density piece. So we may be competitive, but I guess, who knows?
Yeah. And I, sorry.
I think with that one, there's an outstanding question. How many fund, how much of the funds are earmarked out to date? Portland has a really expensive housing ask. And how much of this is a competitive program? So I think that's something.
And Council President, you might know, too, is, is that going, is there still going to be rulemaking involved? And so that process also is going to take a while, isn't it, right?
Yeah. I don't know how it would line up with the Sparrow timeline. Frankly, I don't know if it would align with our, our RFP timeline and process. But I think it would take a little bit of time to go up.
I don't know.
Last time we did allocations, they were direct allocations. And so this just would be a bit different.
So if I'm not, if I'm hearing this right, there, there is no existing loan fund right now then? There was one, but then they removed, did they remove it or what, what happened to that one? There was a $75 million one.
Are we talking?
There's a middle housing.
Merle.
Loan fund that's, that was just recently.
Just last couple of weeks.
Yeah. And then there's a bill, and that exists, that exists. And I'm hopeful that, I mentioned it's just, it might help some of our bigger cottage clusters that have been approved. Maybe they'll be eligible, you know, maybe it'll help that move. But the other is, and that's a revolving loan fund for building, for any. But the other is, and that's a revolving loan fund for building, for anything, that's not specifically about infrastructure. This other one is about infrastructure.
And this might be my own lack of understanding, but we're talking here about a loan program for homeownership or for buying homes.
Correct. It's like a down payment assistance program.
Yeah, no point. One model that I would be really interested in, I think, even the direct allocations, uh, I know that credit unions are working with the state legislature on a bill that would provide some type of guarantee against losses or zero percent down mortgage fees that you provide. And it allows you to spend, it's kind of like Rep. Dambas' SDC bill. If you're not paying off the SDCs yourself, if you're guaranteeing against losses, it allows you to spread those dollars a little bit more. And so I'd be curious to see, I think, when I think about these loan programs, I wanna see how much we can structure these limited resources and create a program.
For greater impact.
Yeah.
If you have information that you want to share, happy to take that.
A little occasion. I know, like, like Portland, Portland has a down payment assistance program that they offer up to like a hundred thousand. I obviously know we can't do that. But they get it back because, you know, you can't sell the house for a certain period of time, and then when you refi or you sell the house, that's how we get our funds back for that program. So it's, it wouldn't be like we give it out and then it's gone. And we would get it back and, like.
So it's like a lien.
Like a mechanic's lien, pretty much, yeah.
Usually it's just like a second.
And you just remove it.
Right.
And you just remove the lien when they, if they're gonna refi, or don't even remove the lien, because once they refinance, the lien has to be paid, right? So then you get your money back. Or if they go to sell the house after, I think Portland is like five years, or ten years you can sell the house, then you get, you get, pay back the money. Now, with that program, obviously, you're not gonna be able to dish, give it out, you know, every single day of the year, because it's gotta be as funds are available. But if you don't have it, then you don't advertise that you're doing it. And then when we do have the funds, you know, and we won't have to use all four fifty, we, we can start by allocating, let's say, fifty thousand dollars from any, from our CET funds, period, and put that aside specifically for that, and just start with a smaller pool, um, and do somewhat of a pilot program, right? And, you know, as I mentioned, I've, I've talked to a, a mortgage company, um, and I've talked to a real estate agent about this stuff and who, um, are, are, will be, uh, providing some testimony hopefully soon, uh, about it. And they, the, the mortgage companies are really willing to do a lot of the legwork in terms of screening the individual, finding, you know, if they're a first time home buyer, going through a financial, uh, like homeownership program, right? Learning about, about being a homeowner, what that entails, and then they would in, in turn, kind of just give us like, hey, here's who qualifies, and then we would win. So it would, it would take the, the processing of it would not be on the city.
Hundred percent. I would say that, um, any, any pursuit of revolving loan program would be working with a third party.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Joseph, on that front, and, and I'll be honest, I'll, that's not my wheelhouse, and I, I guess I didn't realize all down payment assistance programs had to be revolving loan funds, because the revolving part seems like that's a bigger administrative lift than just a direct.
Yep.
One-time, you know, assistance program. And so, um, it is, based on what I see on the screen, is your recommendation that the revolving type of program is the better bet, and?
I have experience with revolving loan funds, uh, and also to Councilor Costerbody's point, it's, it's great, because you can continue to spread that wealth for, for many, many years to come. And it, I think there is something to be said about, um, you know, people continuing to pass on the gift that they were given.
Hundred percent.
I think that's a great piece of it, but certainly doesn't have to be that, could be something else, but that would be.
But even in that case, the, the third party or the partner lender or group, they would administer even the revolving part.
Yeah.
So, oh, it's been four years, you're selling the home, we're getting that piece back. We won't take that on in our.
That's, yeah, that's escrow. Because all the, like, once you sell a home, and whatever liabilities you have to pay, that's, that's where escrow disperses those funds to, to those that are.
Right.
That are due the funds. So if we sold our house, if you had a first and a second, then yeah, then once you sell the house, what you owe to the bank, the first lender gets paid first, and the second gets paid second, and you're getting everything else, but escrow handles all that.
But Joseph, were you, was, was the revolving loan program recommendation to be targeted for the Sparrow development initially?
No.
It's, it's completely separate.
I was just, I was thinking if you wanted to not put all your eggs in one basket, so to speak, uh, for the time being, that's how I would, those would be my priorities in supporting with CET dollars right now.
It, it's four hundred or?
Four fifty.
It's four fifty.
Like four forty something.
Yeah. Yeah, four forty-three. It's probably closer to four fifty now.
I just, just by way of background for people, I listened to, um, it's added on a state housing hearing yesterday, and it was mostly about twenty-one, thirty-eight, but it was a hearing also on Rep. Dobson's bill for the scatter sites, and, um, seemed to get, got no opposition, um, got, uh, apparently, Plaquins County is kind of ahead of, of a growing trend, and more counties are looking to, um, get out of owning scatter sites. And so it is sort of being pitched as a, establishing a program in, in Plaquins County sort of as a pilot. They're asking for sixty thousand per unit, which they have identified sort of as a gap. So it's to establish them as a land trust. I mean, not all of them, but I guess about half of them. And sixty thousand per unit has been identified as the sort of delta between what they have and what they need to make the program work. Um, so it's a four point two million dollar ask.
That's great.
Commissioner's office testified in support.
Yeah, that's great. To that point, um, Mandy, if I forget anything, let me know. But, uh, as far as talking with the Housing Authority about their scattered sites, it's about one hundred and forty-five sites, eighty-five of them are, um, up to eighty-five, I should say, uh, gonna be affordable homeownership units based on a, a greenland trust model. And then there's sixty units that are gonna be fair market value. Of those sixty, there are six in the city of Milwaukee. But if we were gonna go that, that route, or if you wanted to consider that route, or look into properties within our city, uh, Mandy did some great, little quick research on the Zillow prices for that as fair market value. And I would say roughly on average, uh, four hundred K or so. And talking to the Housing Authority, they would be open to, uh, maybe, you know, providing a city Milwaukee discount.
Yeah.
So they are looking.
But even then, we're talking probably one or.
Prince and family.
Yeah, prince and family, exactly.
Did they, do you know if the ones on Thirty Second are in?
Some are, those of the six.
Yeah.
Yeah, those would be nice lots.
Because that is a, I mean, a lot, I drove around the hall of them last fall, when I kind of created my own little matrix. There's six fifteen or seventeen, whatever it is. And, um, you know, most of them did not seem to me to be lots with the law, with real redevelopment potential or infill potential, but those ones on Thirty Second definitely are.
Doesn't look like Thirty Second's on the, their list. Yeah, fortunately.
It may not be, I mean, there's a little Stub Street there, so I don't know if the actual address is Thirty Second.
Okay.
But it's, it's across from the horse.
I know what you're talking about. Thing scares me every time.
You're, you're, you're looking for us to give you some guidance here.
It's, it's only thirty minutes, it might not be.
Yeah, I know, but I, I, I will tell you, I'm, you know, I, I think the Sparrow side is challenging and concerned about developer response. And, um, as much as I'd like to, you know, be in the revolving loan program, I guess I'm more inclined to do whatever we can to make sure that Sparrow, um, is successful and we get, you know, something going. And so I know it's not a lot of money for infrastructure, for access, or like that, but I just look at it as, um, you know, something that may get a developer over the, over the home, you know? So I guess I'm.
Do you think it's one or the other, though?
Well, I, I kind of think it is.
Really?
Yeah.
You don't like the suggested may have money language you're saying?
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about the, the way we do it. I'm saying, that amount, it was Sparrow rather than the revolving loan program.
That's fine, but you don't think we can do both? Because if you don't have the money, then you just don't offer the, I mean, it's not like that's the only money we're gonna get. As, as we get more development.
I agree, I agree.
We can at least put the parameters of a program in place, just not kick the tires on it until we get some funding back into our CET funds, but we can still establish the program.
Just to clarify what I think I'm hearing, uh, Councilor Massey's saying, go all in with your chips on Sparrow. Uh, Councilor Costerbody, you're saying, yes, but then don't, anything in addition to that, whatever happens from that point on, shouldn't, should then be kind of dogged for.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that we can set up the revolving loan program, even if there's nothing in there. We just can't offer anything, and as more money comes in, then we can start deciding on, we can come back to the table. Once there's like, let's say there's, we get another two hundred thousand in there, now we can come back to the table and say, okay, we already have this program in place. All we have to do is say, go.
Sure.
Now, how much of this, what's in here now, do we wanna allocate to this program to give it a shot, right? Because I, I don't think it's one or the other. I think you can put all your chips in the Sparrow while you're still, because we gotta develop the program before we can give any money out, and it doesn't take money in CET now to develop the program. Because on top of that, with the revolving loan program, the same individuals I've talked to, talked to about it, say that there's potential for matching, their respective organizations to match what we, if we were to do a, a grant for seven to ten grand, and then they're able to match another grant, two different places, and you're talking about thirty thousand dollars, you're moving the needle a little bit more than a ten thousand dollar grant. But I still think you can get the loan program outlined and established, and then once funds start coming back in from more development, then you can start saying, okay, guys, we got this much money, do you wanna allocate fifty grand over here to try to run a pilot program for ten to twenty individuals to get this opportunity? So I think you can do both. You just may not be able to fund the revolving loan program now, but at least you got it in place, so when the money comes in, you can.
So I guess related to that, will, won't we know, like in six months, whether Sparrow is, we will know whether we have somebody who's, and whether we need the, the four hundred thousand to make it work or not, right?
Good point. Yes.
Yeah.
I, I'll, I'll speak to you in a second, but Council President.
Yes. And, and I guess this is related. I was peeking on our housing production strategy, and it looks like the timeline for this component is twenty twenty-six. When is it realistic that you might come back to us with some proposed options for what a revolving loan program might look like? How long, Council President, was Spock, was for Bobby's point, would it take to?
Yeah.
Establish this realistically?
Yeah, I think, again, I, I would need to work, and there are a couple of third party I'm happy to talk to.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a, there's other affordable housing, um, third party lenders that are used to this and have contracts with other cities that do very similar things. So those are the other people I'd approach to kind of set up and get more intel. But in the, in the meantime, we could also, as a group, um, we could talk about what kind of guardrails you'd want on that type of program, you know? Meaning like, um, AMI, the amount of, um, well, you know, AMI, also interest.
Has to be a first time home buyer, like that kind of thing.
First time, for sure, I would say, but, uh, if there's interest rates that we wanna consider, or zero interest rate, that's also part of it. Those are things that we could start having those discussions, but eventually, the program, I think working with any third party, they're definitely gonna wanna see, um, s- some money. I don't know if they would entertain, like a, a setting up anything about something in the tank.
And is this a continuing expense, or is this a one-time expense? Because I am a little worried about what it looks like to fund with unstable CET funds or reoccurring expense.
Good question, and what's a reoccurring expense, I'm sorry? So to administrate the program, it's gonna cost money to continue.
If they say, we, we'll do the program, but it takes a hundred thousand a year, I don't know if we can rely on always having a hundred thousand CET, but I guess related to this is, what is the biennial?
Typically, typically with these, these programs, and it, it can be different across different organizations, but you give them a home sum, like say, two hundred K, that's the revolving loan fund, that's, that's the start. Maybe they make twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar, fifty thousand dollar, um, loans to assist first time home buyers. Every time they do that, they do typically take a percentage. So there is, there is a loss to administrate, um, that's part of the fund itself, and so every time they get that money back, it's hopefully be capturing over and over, but they do take, that two hundred thousand dollars will not be two hundred thousand that goes out to first time home buyers. Part of that's gonna go to the entity that's actually administering the program. Every time they do something, that makes some clarity.
On that note, I, there will have, I'm sure there are applicable procurement laws that was about to follow, um, not just direct selecting.
Right.
What part, if there are the financial benefit that the person or that the entity will take, I, I, we will have to get smarter on the selection process we'll have to run to select that part.
Yeah.
So I guess let's go back to the question, how long would it take first even decide what those guardrails are, what the vague components of a revolving loan program would look like and actually implement it? Is this something that's happening in the next two years, or is this?
Well, a part of it depends on what this conversation directs staff to do. If we want to utilize some of the funds to do that now, then we can start that process now, and I would say, I don't know, next couple of months, we can get some of that going. If it's not, if it's not that much of a, if I don't get that direction from you all, and it's not really part of what we should do now, I would say that conversation would then take place. I would say just even the conversation about, you know, what is council interested in when a program of this nature that you'd like to see at a future time, that would probably be months away, just having that like a basic baseline conversation. So what I'm looking for is, I don't wanna put tons of time into something that's not a clear, a directed fund for people, especially when resources are, are tight, and this isn't a ton of money, but we're gonna have to explore all these at some point anyway.
So is there any, and you may not know the answer to this, and it may be changing this legislative session, who knows, but, you know, we do put in our money to the state, and there is like state of state entity that does first time home loan, you know, stuff. Is there any chance of getting a pot of money from them that we administer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I don't know, it's a good question. That's something we're exploring.
Get our money back and just do it ourselves?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, just, yeah.
True, because how many of our?
Knowing, like how that, knowing more about how that goes out, and, and, because it does, I think you're right, they farm it to a bunch of different entities, but why can't they farm it to us?
If it's coming from Milwaukee.
Yeah, right, because how many Milwaukeeans have benefited from the funds that we've paid to the state? Probably not any of them, I would assume.
Yeah.
Who knows? No idea.
I guess coming back.
Yeah.
I mean, I do feel like we, I'm sort of with Councilor Massey that we need to put all our chips in Sparrow, but I also don't wanna not be planning for that kind of a program. I do want us to move along, even if it's slowly toward planning for, I'm gonna sort of with Councilor Costerbody, of like, get further, no more, so that the next time when we talk about it, we really sort of know what we need to pin down and do.
I'm, I'm in support of the, the revolving loan program as well. I just, I just must question the four fifty so that we have a better chance of sending for Sparrow, because that's the nearest term delivery.
Of course, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And I, I, I agree with that, yeah.
Well, I think we can set, maybe as a, a milestone for us coming back to some of that, that initial information would be the June, um, work session when we do the action planning for, uh, the affordability call. Apparently we'll do that, so.
I said ten, that's the study session.
Your ten is the study session, so it's would be June third.
Yeah.
And those, um, scoping conversations, are we dedicating an hour to that?
Ninety.
All right, and so this would be the extra thirty minutes afterwards, or would this be a component?
Would be part of that, with the information that's gonna be added to here.
Like a tight conversation.
I think we put council reports after all of those, so we're just getting into your two.
You're well played.
Even better.
I don't think that 450 is very much when it comes to development, but it's hard when it's a lot for our jurisdiction. So I'm trying to, those two things are in a battle inside me. And I think that I am of the opinion that we go chips in and develop a concept around what the revolving loan program could look like, so that when we have a more renewable opportunity, then we're ready to implement.
Awesome, great. Two minutes left?
So when are we releasing our opinions for?
We, so we do have to do.
Surplus thing, right?
We do have to replat because there are some legal lots that are still underneath that property. So you can't build across those outlines. We have to clean it up, just, we did the same thing on the City Hall property when we did it. So that'll be roughly two months and then, so two months from now.
That's good though, because we could use that extra time to do some outreach with the Island Station neighborhood.
Yes. And the mayor's point too, is that if we do go out to the RFP and Councilor Massey, you're also speaking to us, and we don't get a response, or we don't get a strong response, or whatever, we might be back at the table having a whole different discussion about San Tito, right? So that's also very possible, I think, at that point.
While we have Mandy here, we have an update on our energy project down at JCB.
Yes, it's, have you guys, have you driven by? It's like, they're wrapping up on the road tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, you can see it from the road and it's beautiful.
Cool.
Nice, okay, yeah, I will have to go.
Drive by every time I drop the kids off, pick them up, so.
Yeah. Come along.
All right, anything else for these guys while we've got them here?
So all in on Sparrow. We'll come back in June, talk more about revolving loan fund, dynamics, I guess, or details, and we'll see what happens in between.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. Yeah, really good, thank you.
Thank you.
We need 30 minutes.
That's good.
All right, you're adjourned, and we'll be back in six, on the regular session.